All right, I now call the October 2017 Planning Commission Workshop to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with Nevada Open Meeting Law. City Clerk, please call the rule.
Chair Slottman.
Present.
Vice Chair Cherry.
Present.
Commissioner Glenn, here. Commissioner Drew, excused. Commissioner Chisom, here. Commissioner Roush.
Here.
Commissioner Insavius.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This was an open hearing. Anyone want to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move on to Agenda Item Number Four. Or Agenda Item Number Five, Presentation Regarding the Planning Commission Open Meeting Agenda, Open Meeting Law, Agenda Posting, Agenda Materials. And I would like to ask if Mr. Lowenstein or Mr. Scott would like to do it first.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think for clarification, you wanted citizens' participation at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
So we're on Item Number Five, Presentation Regarding the Planning Commission Meeting Agendas, Open Meeting Laws, Agenda Posting, and Agenda Materials. I can run through some of the basics on the Agenda Posting. The clerk is more than happy to fill in where I'm wrong.
You feel good, do you want to start?
Sure.
For the two new commissioners, we onboarded you probably about a month or so ago, or a couple months ago when you first got on the commission. I provided you with four different documents that I think you've been handed out already. The clerk has a copy of those. The Code of Ethical Conduct, the Open Meeting Law, Public Records, and Planning and Zoning Guide. They're going to give you some more guidance with regard to how the planning commission works. We have, the Open Meeting Law requires that any time that you are discussing items, or you just can't have a phone and can't get together, or you couldn't have a coffee together and discuss a crime, you can't make a consensus. It also requires that anything that's agenda, have to follow a certain guideline, which the clerk follows to the letter, with regard to discussing possible action regarding item X, Y, and Z. I think that we need a fairly self-explanatory. Anything that you receive from a developer, or anything that you write, it's going to be a public record. So it's always, make sure we always are very careful with regard to emails, correspondence, things like that that you send and you receive. Anything you receive from a developer is required to be put into the record if it's part of the decision-making process. Some of those are all public records. Yes, should we, if we get email from somebody from the community, should we automatically just email that to the city clerk? You can, city clerk, I mean, do you do that, do you print it out and bring it with them?
Sure, you can print it out and bring it to the meeting. I'm sorry, it's the way at home, city clerk. You can print it out and bring it to the meeting. If you think it's pertinent to the item, not all of your email, but if you, it's something that you want to add as part of the record for the meeting, definitely, you can bring it. During the meeting, you can actually say, like, this submitted as a record, and hand it down to the clerks, and they'll do that.
Okay. So just remember that. So that everything you write, read, anything you write, receive, anything like that is considered public record. Anything that you use to make your determination after proving or disproving an item needs to go into the public record as part of your rationale.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions with regard to what's considered as public record and what's not? That's what I also tell you, you know, whenever you mix your workup with your business phone, it always has a tendency to, if someone wants to discover something about you, you know, it's always kind of nice to keep things separate. Again, the Open Meeting Law, I think we've all dealt with that quite a bit during our meetings now. Requires city clerks to post certain meetings at certain locations. Posting to certain locations requires that all business of the commission be done during a properly-norated public hearing. Anybody have any questions with regards to the Open Meeting Law, if you don't understand what the clerk is doing there? The next one is on ethical, Code of Ethical Conduct. There are certain instances where you may have a conflict of interest, and you may have to meet with the same particular item. Part of the time that you, the item is discussed, you may want to see there's a particular indicator indicating that, you know, I have a personal relationship with a person, I resent the judgment compromise, therefore I will be voting for the item. Or if you think it's kind of a situation where you're not quite sure, you can always call me or the city attorney, Brian Derbic, and discuss it with us with regard to whether or not you kind of feel that there may be something of an ethical violation, but you're not quite sure. I think a number of you have called me, several of you have called me occasionally, and have discussed that with us. Hopefully you've been helpful in that regard. We always want to make sure that you, we always want to be proactive, but if you, we don't want to seem like we're just saying, telling you no all the time, but we try to make sure that we're being proactive and telling you things that may help you not go before the active commission, which is never a pleasant task. So it's always important that, if you have a question, please feel free to ask us with regard to, you know, if you think that there may be something that you're not quite sure about. One thing on both, on conflicts of interest, sometimes you have friends, and I know, you know, Vegas is a very small town, we all went to high school, some college, some one. We make friends with people that come for us, that kind of thing. It's going to be really important that you kind of keep those relationships kind of at a distance because of the fact that you may wind up with a tentative judgment issue. So, you know, again, everyone's nice and friendly, and we're all like your friends, but, and especially those business people in the room, that you have business relations with certain people, and you become friends and that kind of thing. So it's always important that you make sure to keep those relationships to a certain position where you're in the business of judgment in the sense that if you told that person no, you could still remain friends, and it's going to be okay. So if that's the case, and you can tell that person no, then probably more than likely you're in the business of judgment, but it hasn't been compromised. Anybody have any ethical issues or conflicts that they'd like to discuss, or anything?
I would agree, Mr. Chairman. I haven't, we have an applicant this evening, as a matter of fact, and we do share a common wall. We don't socialize. I've never spoken to him. I don't, sort of, bull, I, you know, he is my neighbor directly. I have zero relationship with him. The first time I've ever spoken to him on the phone was yesterday morning regarding a project that's in front of us this evening. I certainly don't have a conflict personally, but I am his neighbor.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're just not, we don't.
Sometimes those situations are very sticky because of the fact you are neighbors, you'll be, you know, for the rest of your life, you're going to have to deal with this person. Are you, you have to make your own mind and determine if you're comfortable enough to be able to say no to that person, or yes to whatever adjacent project may be, may be he or she may be opposing, and you can still be comfortable neighbors.
Thank you.
If that's the case, and you really don't think you can be comfortable neighbors, then you may want to better terms of caution just then.
And to you, Mr. Chairman, my very first vote was with, Mr. General, sitting next to me, and it was the common wall behind me, and that they were building a fence in Rancho Circle. And I was, I did abstain on that vote that evening because that did affect me.
Yes.
You know, I mean, the wall.
Yes, sure.
So this, this item this evening does not affect me in any way. I'm confident in myself that I've made a good decision in my thought process as I sit here in front of you, but I just wanted to make sure that you know this, this man is my neighbor.
Yes.
That we have zero contact. His kids are two to mine are thirty.
And again, we, and we'll bring that back up at the meeting, the regular council meeting, but yeah, some situations similar to that, you would, you could make that disclosure, make sure that you're comfortable enough to say, my decision judgment isn't compromised, therefore I'm able to vote on that.
I would say.
One of the things that I told the council, when we, when we onboarded our two new commissioners, we talked to, I'm sorry, council people, we talked to them about the fact that you sit in a quasi-mutual type of setting. So in that regard, it's always necessary for you to make your decisions during the meetings. No promises to people, I know it's very hard, but you see your projects you love, to not say, oh, I love this project, I agree one hundred percent for. It's always important that you hear both sides of the issue first, and then make your decision in the actual meeting. So that's always, that's always, it's a difficult thing, because people, when you get the representatives before you, or you get people opposing a project, you're going to oppose that, right, county commissioner? You know, you feel like you're obligated to say yes or no at that point in time, but make sure you just let them know, I need to hear both sides of the issue, I'm not committing either side, and then, you know, I'll make my determination after, you know, the day during the, during the public meeting.
Mr. Scott, I have a question, Slottman, Chair. I just wanted to say the same thing. I mean, there, there was a point when I was a new commissioner, and, you know, there were certain things in my head, I just said, there's no way that I can vote for this, this is absurd.
That's natural.
And then, you know, then you meet with somebody, and they explain that, well, it's just due to this one portion of the property being one inch from, you know, like, whatever. And it's like, okay, that isn't the world. And so you change your mind from an opposition to, um, in support, or, there's other times where I said, you know, I build it, I'm in support of this, and then I get there, and I hear other evidence, and, so I just made the rule that, I mean, I would never tell anybody that I'm either in support or in opposition of their project. I might tell them that I don't have a big issue, or could you look at changing the landscaping or adding a little bit more landscaping? Or would you look at doing this, and I'll, I'll take all this into consideration after the hearing, then I'll, I'll make up my mind.
Yeah, the best rule is to be non-committal. I mean, even though you can hear them out, you can not, you can do whatever, but just be non-committal with regard to, to the projects, because we recently had a council person, I'm going to tell you, but with a council person whose mind was changed at the meeting, and that person had committed to this person, to this group, oh, I, oh, it's a great project, I love it, I'm in full support of it. Then, when it came time, when the neighbors started talking and all the negatives and everything else, that, that council person then wound up changing their mind. And they're like, you know, they looked at the person, said, I know I told you what I told you, but, you know, I, you know, based upon disinformation. That's why it's always important, because they're only going to tell you, the applicants are only going to tell you so much information. And the, and the neighbors and proponents and people who are for it are going to tell you a lot more information than probably they are aware of. So it's always important that you get all of the facts first, and then make your determination. You know, we're human, though. You know, we, we know what we like, and so, you know, but, you know, try to, you know, make sure that you're non-committal, and then just make your determination after.
Do you want more comments, please? I think it's, in the past two years, we have to be proud of the previous commission and this commission, because we get to see an ethics complaint.
That's true.
And I think that says a lot about, well, it just says a lot about, it just says a lot about them and us and everybody, because I, I think that it's important to compliment the people as best they left and for doing this here, so thank you, Mr. Scott.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, we do take pride in that fact, that, you know, we view, and you had a very, everyone communicates with us, and that's the greatest part of the fact that if you've got a question, or if there's some, something that's just out of the ordinary, you always make the call, just to make sure that, you know, what your first, and that was your first thought, your first instinct is probably the correct one, that you just want to confirm with the best, and we do appreciate all of you actually asking for our advice. But we don't like to do those ethical answers, and we don't like to have to attend to them.
I do, I do, I know, it's like, you know.
So it's just been a while, so.
Chairman Slottman, I apologize.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, three. Christina Roush, it's no secret that I ran for office, and similar to the two new council members that you just onboarded, sometimes there are some very hairy issues or neighborhood issues associated with that campaign.
Yes.
And sometimes there are applicants that are still coming before, so I'm sure that you already had this conversation with Councilwoman Soroka, as it applies to me, what advice do you have for me as it relates to applicants that come before us regarding items on Queens Ridge, which were very contentious during the election? You know, do I need to abstain from that, or?
No, I don't think you need to abstain, but I mean, this, I mean, I think that things always change when you, when you come onboard. I mean, there's, there's the election time, and then there's the actual serving time.
Agreed.
And your views as a candidate may have been different than your views as a commissioner or a council person.
Agreed.
So I think you just have to play by ear, and I think you just have to really kind of just think, you know, you'll sometimes get more information as a council person than you will ever get as a candidate. So, I mean, it really just is a matter of just you being able to just be true to what you believe in, and make sure that you're making the right decision for that community, and make sure that, you know, that was me as a candidate, I didn't have all the facts back then, or I didn't have, you know, whichever, whichever way.
Fair enough.
Yeah, fair enough. Because always the thing is, that's when people come here to have a fair hearing. The one thing I really hate is when people say, oh, this has already been, this has already been, this has already been, the fix is already.
I hate that.
It's like, I've worked here over twenty-one years, and I saw, I don't think we, it comes to this collusion that people think we come to at any, at any time. So I hate when people say the fix is in, because I think you have a very fair, to the public, if you're, you let them talk, and I think they can get a very fair hearing, so.
And there's seven of us.
Yes, yeah, and you all check each other. And that's the nice thing, is that you can still check each other, but you're friendly after, you know, that's always the nice part of it.
Well, and, and also, while we're on that topic, not only do we need to be friendly with each other, but we, I went through about APA workshop with, I think, Peter and Robert Somerville, who were there, Mr. Lowenstein and Mr. Somerville. And, you know, I go through all the planning commission workshops at the APA, and Vice Chair Cherry has had the opportunity to attend some of those ethic workshops with me, and one of the things that I learned at the first workshop, which was repeated and created in my mind, is let's always try to be fair and balanced with the people that are in the audience. Even though they might not agree with our decision, they get, they get heated up, you know, on a particular item, and I try to calm them down as much as I can before I tell them, sit down. But I, you know, they, this is stuff happening in their backyard, they become a little passionate about it, they become nervous when they're sitting in front of a board of seven people with all the planning staff, and there's fourteen, sixteen, five inches, you know, showing their face. So even though we're not necessarily members of the city government, they perceive us as the city government, and.
Well, Chairman, I mean, I, you are, you are members, I mean, you're like, you're an appointed person, so.
Yes, but what I'm trying to say is, they see us as the people that, I mean, we're running the day-to-day operations. A lot of people this evening, that don't know me, think that I have an office down at City Hall, and I'm directing the planning department, and all these other people that call me. And, but, I mean, we're an extension, I mean, what, what we do and the way that we treat people is the way that they go, the planning staff and the building department, and everybody else is going to treat me. So we've got to be, we have to, we have to take that into consideration when people get up there and try and be nice and fair to all of them, and take their feelings into consideration.
And we, I think we all can understand that this is their homes or communities, and they're heated about a particular issue that affects their lives. I mean, our homes are our most valuable asset, and, you know, the biggest thing to spend money on. And, and I, it does get a little heated at times, because people don't think that you're listening to what they're saying. It's always, it's always easy to yell at a person back and forth, that you never, you never care what either of them are saying, so.
And to you, Mr. Chairman, I'm completely guilty about five times being completely heated in those meetings in ten years, and I apologize, but sometimes you're exhausted, and you're angry, and they didn't tell you the truth, and then I kind of wildly handle it, not because I'm a mean or ugly person, it's just because I'm very passionate, and sometimes I just get angry, and I have to control my own self, and I do, I do take notice of that, and direct anything, not to me, but I get it, you know, I try so hard, sometimes I get a little bit.
But, 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 yes, I have, yes, I have, Commissioner, Commissioner Glenn, it happens all, it happens all, it happens to me, it's happened to former commissioners, and, I mean, we're just the track of childrens. Trust me, Commissioner, on seventeen years I've been president of the planning commission, you, trust me, you're not to compare to what I've experienced, so. So, but, but again, you know, we're just wanting two AM, three AM, it used to be four AM when we were, we were back in our days, we had four to eleven, five.
Twice a month.
Yeah, twice a month. It got a little heated, and people just got a little frustrated again, because they, they want to get their point across, they don't think they're making a point to you, you don't think you're making a point to them, they're yelling at you and calling you, calling you, you know, you're on the tape, you're, it's, so, it's kind of, you know, it's, so, we just have to remember that we're, if you guys are here to do a job, you do a great job, you're getting that eighty dollars, you know? That's a makeup.
Every dime.
That's a makeup for all your, your heels, you know?
Covers my ass, here.
So, anything, anything else on, like, extension of voting, but please call our office if you have any issues with regard to any, anything that you feel kind of on the fence about with regard to, should I vote, should I not be voting, that kind of thing, so. And again, if you're in a business of judgment compromise, you know, your relationship, you have that person, or that contractor person, or they owe you money, you owe them money.
That's for good.
Please, just, you know, just remember that, just probably have a buzz and caution, and just go ahead and say the issue. I've also given you guys this planning and zoning guide. This is a very bare-bones guide that kind of tells you. Love to work with you, Mr. Commissioner, that was a climbing commission workshop. Mr. Chairman, I was telling you that I gave you a list of about four different handouts here, open meeting law, code of ethical conduct, planning, zoning, and public records, I was just going through the planning and zoning. This is kind of really bare bones, kind of, planning and zoning guides, it kind of gives you, sometimes the bare facts about variances, especially implements, general plan amendments. And it kind of lists, and it always tells you that the applicant always has the burden to prove. It's always, their burden to turn to, tell you and convince you that their typical project had merit, and it's warranted. It consists with regard to variances, and we know, we know a lot of variances with regard to garages and forgeshers and, and accessory structures and whatever they do. That's a very strict standard that should be adhered to. And we can't let, I guess, the fact that we may like an applicant, or dislike an applicant, kind of go with, you know, you really have to base it on what the findings are, what the finding is accurate. And that's, and that's something that you guys really got to have to kind of get from the particular applicant, or from the opponents or proponents of the, of the item, so.
Ryan. Peter Lowenstein, acting director of the planning department. Mr. Chairman, and your other package, and we have the yellow, gold, and the black finding. You have, in the last part of it, a handout we prepared, which are the actual findings found within the Unified Development Code, for which decision-makers would rely upon to see if, as the attorney has indicated, that they warrant other meetings or criteria in which they are compatible or homeless, or if allowable uses are allowed, and then they'll stand based on the application to us. So I've had to open up the general plan amendments, rezoning, variances, which includes statute in it, as well as the use permits and precise development reviews, which pretty much covers a gambit of applications that they see for you. And any one of these findings on their, when a motion is made, either up or down, you can rely upon those as a credible finding in which to base a decision. All discussion aside, at the end, we stress that a finding is made on an item, it actually gives us a lot more legal standing for, for us to defend the action of the planning commission.
And normally, and part of my job is, used to be, that I would win the other way, with regards to zoning and planning. It was always important, and every time that we get, we get sued, we were sued for arbitrary decrees, saying that the city council of planning officials arbitrary decrees in their, in their, in their decision.
Mr. Chairman, where's that?
That means, that means you didn't have any basis for, for denying or approving the thing. You just, you know, if you pick eight versus ten versus twelve, you know, there was no basis for you choosing, you know, the number of cows, if you, if you have three, why three versus four versus seven, versus five versus two?
Back yourself up.
You, you have to have rationale for anything and everything you do. I was using cows as a, this is, this is an example, could be chickens, could be, could be whatever. But it's really important that you make findings, and the findings can be as simple as, I agree with what the planning staff, the, the planning staff's report. When you're going against the planning staff's report, which is always kind of an uphill battle to fight, you got to make sure that you kind of go through and cite why you believe the planning staff is incorrect. Because a lot of times, I had to do that too during meetings when the city council was voted against staff's advice. Of course, the, the person who's suing us is that, well, look, the staff report clearly says that our vote is incompatible. Now, I got an uphill battle to fight to say, you know, the planning staff doesn't know what I'm talking about, you know, the, but, but you, you choose what the neighbors say, what the, you know, because staff was strictly half the federal. They, they don't look at what the, you know, they don't live in that neighborhood, they don't have the same feel for that, they, they go strictly by the federal saying, well, this must be almost compatible, because it's seat two here, so if you have your seat two there, but you're thinking, but there's a neighbor that's directly behind this, and that's taking that, taking the deliberation, the noise of this auto shop, this may, so those are the things that you need to make findings with regard to, because otherwise, your, your decision-making is arbitrary decrees. Could have a lot of issues with regard to, and I'm not going to pick any particular, but, but these results, the circumrals. It's going to be important that whenever we're denying or approving, you make sure that you must make some finding based upon testimony that's given by the, by the opponents or proponents, evidence that was provided by the planning staff, and things that you may have looked at, things like that. And that's one thing, too, you can go out and look at a site, you can go out and talk to the applicant, you can talk to the applicant representative, but make sure that everything that you've talked about and seen comes back into the planning meeting, to make sure that you put everything on the record as part of your decision-making process. And that, that way, you're able to say, I wasn't arbitrary decrees, I, I chose, I saw this, 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 and this, and it's not based on opinions, it's based on the fact that I, that there's a neighbor here, there's noise, this, you know, that kind of thing. So you've done a lot of, you've all done a really good job of kind of making your case, and the new people, you had a really good surprise, but you had to do a really good job, and really kind of breaking down exactly what it is that you believe to be the correct, you know, zoning for particular thing. None of the newer commissioners normally are really quiet, so it's, it's been nice to hear you guys, hear you guys speak up, so. But just make sure that any time you make a decision, either for or against, you can be as easy as to say, I agree with the staff, the staff report, therefore I'm recommending denial, I agree with the staff report, therefore I'm recommending approval, or I'm going against that report because of this, this, and this. And so as long as you have those findings, then we, we're hoping that the court will not perceive as the fee arbitrary decrees. Vice Chair, Chair.
Uh, to the Chair. So it seems like we have a lot of, have had, probably will have, a lot of projects, proposed projects that are infill projects that got a commercial court order right behind it, presidential, maybe it's on Rancho, maybe it's on Charleston, and they try to rezone to a more intense use. Maybe they need S U Ps in the future for that intense use, you know, that helps protect it, but why doesn't the city do resolution of the tents that allow rollbacks, give a little more protection?
We used to say, we, we are, we, we used to do that, but I think that the, and staff take that than I can, but I know that they wanted that firm zone, rather than having these things that kind of rolled back.
It just seemed like, okay.
And maybe, and staff, if Chairman Bill Martin is having to address that issue?
Well, between, between Robert and I, we're probably, I think the practice is a dated practice that was actually bound to be more contractual than the actual.
The ROI.
The ROI, and therefore, it doesn't really hold up, it's like you granted it, but you can't really turn it.
I remember at one point, Chairman, that we were actually forgetting, they were forgetting that an ROI existed on certain point, thing, and they were, like, hard, so we had two man meetings, Robert Somerville from planning.
Unfortunately, we have a number of examples where it was not clear in the record whether or not something was ROI or not. To Mr. Lowenstein's point, zoning is not supposed to be contractual by nature, and so by making it a condition, you, it was considered, it's not considered best practice to do that. I think some smaller jurisdictions may still find that type of thing, but if you look to finish mark across the country, that practice has kind of gone away, because putting conditions on zoning is usually problematic, and there's been a couple of work, I don't think it goes to, like, say, precourt level, but there's been a couple of work cases in other places where that was found to not be an appropriate use of zoning. The conditions usually come with a more discretionary, which are your special use permits and your type of element if you, like, applications to limit.
I understand, through the Chair, I understand that the second part, that the first part of the chain on S U P paperwork to not know, you know, what the actual zoning was that's on, on those ways.
It was a mapping, I think like a mapping, so, so that show one thing, and then it would actually be a map.
And, and I just, talking to folks in other jurisdictions about it, like, we count that it's something that still goes on, specifically these infill things that are happening, so just made me think of why we're not looking at it, apparently we just look at.
Well, we, we actually had it, I mean, it was actually added in then, after.
Looked several years. And, and it's really in these areas, again, like, you know, even Las Vegas Boulevard, Charleston is an example, those are the ones that I see pop up, and you have a year of a neighbor on one side, and, you know, a project you tried to make work, yes, so.
Vice Chair, if, if I, if I could give a couple of people here that might want to understand a little bit more about what the resolution, resolution of an example with the zoning, could you just?
Yeah, Chair. Well, maybe the planning people will be better than us.
Would you give us thirty, forty-five second, like, answer on what a resolution of an intent is?
So, the council would take action to change a zoning district from, say, office to limited commercial, and in doing so, they left it with a timeframe in which it to be exercised. Standard was two years, if not defined specifically in the conditions of approval. It also could be extended by extension of times, therefore going perpetuating itself. And then there was additional conditions that have been placed on the rezoning, could be some different types of exactions as part of, or sometimes it was limiting uses, which is another challenging practice.
It was almost like you were layering one, I guess, you know, the zoning category on the other side. It'd be almost like you had a commercial property, but you were also having ROI given for residential, and then that's kind of the two year one.
I think if, if there was a subsequent rezoning application, we could sponge the previous one, and it would just establish a new ROI going forward, but we've had ones that were like, limited commercial, but you're limited to almost no uses other than what you would be in an office. Maybe I can add from my perspective, kind of, if, if I had a, a project that I wanted to push forward, and if it wasn't zoned, I needed to change more intense zoning, and that, that would allow, and I was granted that resolution of intent, I have to perform on what I put forward as a developer, otherwise I'd lose that right to do that project, go back to your zone, so in summary, that's the way I see it.
I like that a lot. It allows us to see what's actually going on that site.
It, it, it seems to help on very difficult quarters, you know, where it's infill, that's, that's the only benefit. See, I can understand the hard zoning everywhere else, and while value is growing, that, you know, people need to have their firm zoning, and I get that, but it's just these difficult sites that we're coming across now, because the way it goes now.
Excuse me, Chairman, for a year.
Yes.
I'd just like to provide my perspective very quickly, and I'll keep it very brief, but similar to Mr. Cherry, I've had a lot of experience in real estate and development. I remember the ROIs from the county, from the city, and my experience with them is that one of the downfalls is that it becomes a kick the can situation, and you have developers that are entitling properties and then want to turn around and sell them on speculative basis, based on that ROI representation, and many times that creates a liability both for the jurisdiction or municipality that's involved, as well as maybe the buyer, who then comes back and puts a further condition on council or planning commission to say, well, I was promised this, and so now I get this, and then, of course, they never want to build to the exact standard, because similar to what Mr. Lowenstein has said, the ROI might provide for, you get, you know, X number of units per acre, or you have to build to this commercial standard. Well, nobody's ever going to build what the prior applicant was granting. They come in and they have their own thing that they want to do, but they take that and it turns into Frankenstein. So, they're like, well, you gave me this, but now I want that, and I want another two years, and it's a kick the can, and it just perpetuates, and so, I do see both sides. I think that there was definitely a place and time for ROIs, or some, some manifestation of that that might be a good placeholder for infill development, but the flip side of it is that we have to manage this flow of applications that are outstanding, that no one ever intends to build on it, they're simply going ahead and zoning something for the sake of speculation, and that's always a problem.
Commissioner Roush, I have a follow-up question for you, and I don't want this whole conversation to go around.
I did want to ask one more question.
If, if there is a resolution of intent, and they had, you know, particular, I mean, and you wanted it to follow a particular standard, they sell the property and they want to come back, at least it could come back to the planning commissioner or the city council, they, they still have that right and ability to come back, but it just doesn't allow them to put in a automotive, you know, repair shop where they might be putting in something less intense, so.
Oh.
Absolutely.
We could carry the conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
That brings me to another subject, Mr. Chair. With regard to the open meeting law, and with regard to, I mean, there's certain instances, and that would be a lot of flyers, like, everything you discuss has to be, as it, not that that conversation was, that was okay for now, but I just wanted to, let you guys carry on a little bit more, just to indicate that sometimes we get a little off topic at meetings, so I'll try to help the chair direct you guys back to getting back on the topic, because we can get, second, I mean, you have something, like, we want to know how much something costs, or what, you know, which has nothing to do with the actual land use that you're there to talk about, and the neighbors will always kind of be the person who leads you in that direction, to say, well, what about this? And you're thinking, well, that has nothing to do with land use, so we have to kind of guide them back to get to the land topics. So, it's always important for us to kind of stay on topic, even though, you know, you want to address the public's concerns, but you always want to try and stay on the agenda topic.
And the agenda topic is always a planning matter.
Yes.
Nothing else, it's not, you know, their financial hardship, it's nothing, nothing to do with, they're gonna lose their house, if they can't, can't get those, or it's always...
Because they're thirty thousand dollars to build, therefore I'm gonna lose all my money if you don't allow me to do this variance.
Is it right for the area, or is it not right for the area from a land use standpoint? That's only then that we, we work at.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, so, I mean, those make the things happen a little bit longer, just because we do have to go through all of that other, other stuff, and, and so, anyway, so that's, so that's about the open meeting law, so just in terms of basically kind of staying on topic and keeping.
Mr. Lowenstein.
All right, so, agenda posting, state statute is seventy-two hours prior to the meeting.
Three full working days, correct?
Which, in turn, based on our operating schedule here at the city, turns out to be the Tuesday prior, so it turns out to be seven calendar days. We issued all the information to the planning commissioners and to the city tree at the same time, so that no one side can ambush the other, I guess, so to speak. At that time, when it's published, we still gather comments, protest, and supports, that's why we make mention in our presentations that we've received extra protest or supports. Also, you receive, your handout, this sheet, this tells you how much has been received after the publication. So, there may have been protests and support items that have been received prior to that. They're on the first page of the staff report, you look at it, it'll tell you how many notices have been mailed, and how many have been received for protest or support. After the publication, you would rely on this to see if anything new has come in. This is given, well, this is sent out an email via Nora, our agenda technician, as well as we have this out, and will be at your respective chairs at the beginning of the meeting.
So, is the Ludes Avio for the record, so, does that list have the ones that were already sent in added to it, and that's the overall number, or is that in lieu of?
That is after the publication, so it does not include it before. So, it's just showing you how many more have come in.
Well, I remember seeing, Christine Roush, I remember seeing this at the meeting, but are we getting this in advance of the meeting? I don't remember seeing it in advance.
We're getting it in advance.
Right, okay.
You have the bag at that point.
That was my clarification, thank you.
Yeah, but I think they, they accept, oppositions or, you know, they accept whatever comments up to the time.
So, and even at the meeting, we'll see that they go directly to the clerk at that point, and then they're carried forward to the city council if the item moves forward. The agenda materials, online, all the ones that we protest and supports, if there are any, we've received prior to the publication, they're attached to the backup materials, and you can find, when you click on your particular project, you can scroll down, and on the right-hand side, there'll be a PDF of all the ones that have been submitted prior to the publication, so you can review any comments of people that have handwritten on it, or letters that have submitted, or electronic comments that have been filed to us. In addition to that, we have all our backup materials, including all the supporting documentation, which is your site plans, your landscape plans, tentative maps, the building elevations, depending on the type of applications. It also includes a statement of financial interest, which is a disclosure form for the applicant to say, yes, I do have a vested interest with either the mayor, the planning commissioners, or city council members, and this is another stopgap for you guys to identify if there's any potential complaints. The application form's also in there, that tells you who the property owner is, who the applicant is, the representative, they could be all the same, or they could be all different. It also gives general information on the application form of what they're requesting. We have the formal justification letter as part of it, so it's in their own words what they're proposing to do on the project. On certain application types, like churches and residential districts, they have to include in those justification letters what their accessory uses are. So, then that, they're kind of held, if they are approved, they are held to what's in their justification letter, so it's another way to, if there is an issue going forward, we go back to the justification letter and say, you stated you were going to do this, and you're not meeting that intent. We also have our location and aerial maps, which also include on certain types of uses, special area maps that show you, this is how many protected uses are around where the proposed location, say, for a tavern, it's, you know, it'll identify other businesses of similar, similar uses on those. Was I missing anything?
Can I ask a question, Chair Slom, just for all the planning commissioners in the room, who always use, uses, not, don't want to butcher the name, but Scribe? You use Scribe?
I have used it, but I prefer using Mr. General Commissioner.
Okay, but do you go on the city's website and look at the backup?
Yes, I do.
Oh, well, so, there's Scribe as in terms of going online. You have Scribe app.
Scrib is...
Scrib, it's an app that you can download.
Scrib or Scribe?
Your, your pleasure.
Let's go Scribe. Yeah, so I go on there, and definitely, before the meeting, to look out of that.
Sure. So, if you click on Scribe, it would, it down, it's a super compressed file that downloads, fairly easy for me, I, I've heard of people that say they have to download it for three hours, but it usually downloads in sixty seconds for me, and you can just scroll through the fourteen to seventeen hundred pages with the backup information, instead of having to click on...
Each PDF.
Click on the... I'm not clicking each... Oh, so, Commissioner, I'm sorry, but if you'd like to do that, then go ahead, but this Nora sends out an email in, prior to the planning commissioner, you should look at that?
Yeah, yeah.
If you, she has one that says, here's the, your city website, and here's Scribe, if you click Scribe, then you're not having to click back and forth, and you can just scroll up and down through that agenda item, and it saves you a lot of time. Well, it saves me a long time.
And, Mr. Chair, and as you all know, I know it's a lot of documents to read, I know some of our readers are quite lengthy, so it's always important to kind of go through materials ahead of time. And, Mr. Chair, if I, I figure, how soon in advance do they get their books? So, is that enough time for you guys to go through?
No.
No? Okay.
It's terrible. That's contrary to...
Chair, do you have that?
Lewenholm City Clerk, so, by best practices and also by common practices of the city of Las Vegas, we've always supplied, at the same time that you get your information, what the open meeting law says is, we also have to make that available to the public. So, at the time that you see it go online, you guys will have the information. Those times should never vary, but thirty minutes, I mean, we really do try to get that right on point.
And I know, like I said, I know it's a lot of material to go through, and there's gonna be some short-term methods to not have to read every, you know, all the, I mean, sometimes you have to read the history of the property, and what things occurred prior to that, and, and you kind of go through all the, I'm not sure how to shortcut the materials, they are quite lengthy, so, I believe we have eighty and a hundred item meeting, so, just do your best in terms of just going through it, and it kind of makes for a smoother meeting, Chair.
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind, Peter Lowenstein for the record, so, keep in mind, your agenda makes it eight items, but there's multiple items per one project, so there's one staff report for all of those items. Obviously, your first and foremost, you're looking at your respective boards and looking at those materials, and then going on to the rest of the agenda. The staff reports are comprehensive, they address all of them, so if you had an eighty item agenda, which is a large one, we're usually around forty to sixty is our sweet spot, but that could tick up, that's probably about twenty-five to thirty-two projects, as that kind of correlates. We have some standalone ones, so we have standalone S U Ps and variances, but I guess it becomes, for more of our veteran commissioners, they probably give you a better idea how they roll through the agenda, but everybody's individualistic. As Lance said, you know, we're kind of, at the same time, sending out the information to everyone, but if there's anything we can do to make it easier, we're gonna take any kind of suggestions and see what we can do going forward.
Mr. Roush.
Christine Roush, one of the challenges that I'm facing is that many times the applicant puts their application in, you know, and we're all familiar with the separation dates, there's the deadline that they have to get it in, and there's the point in time where you give us the agenda and all of the backup that goes with it, and I've got applicants calling me wanting to meet and talk about their item when we don't even have an agenda or any backup yet, that's extremely difficult, and I try not to put myself in that position to have that meeting. Secondarily, these folks are also reaching out to my council member and meeting with them in advance of any backup or anything that I even know about the applicant or the item, and so, what's best practice on that instance?
Well, to build on the, we have applicants that are holding neighborhood meetings before they even file an application to the city that we are not even aware of.
And I understand that.
So, the lobbying portion of it starts and never stops, basically.
And I understand that, but best practice in that regard.
As a disturbance, I'm always wanting to be prepared for a meeting, I hate going to a meeting and all of a sudden it's like, oh, we're talking about elephants, I thought we were talking about sea lions, I had the problem, so, I mean, that's the thing, it's like, so, I mean, you always want to tell them, I mean, I know it's hard telling the lobbyist, hey, you know what, let me get the materials first, and they're never gonna present the same materials that the planning department presents to you, so.
Well, sometimes it's just an applicant himself, you know, and I hate to disappoint them, but it's like...
But you're in total disbalance if you don't have the materials in front of you, so. I mean, unfortunately, you may have to tell the applicant, hey, I can't be within this point in time until I get the, until I get the material and go through them, and that may not be for a couple days before the meeting, you know, like that.
Mr. Chair.
I was, through the chair, I was saying, it gets easier over time, I mean, you just, you can't, you know, I don't like to put myself in that position at all, so just...
My question was simply, Christine Roush, my question was simply, it's appropriate for me to say, I'm sorry, I cannot meet with you at this time until I have my agenda and all of my backup, which I have told people numerous times, and then they complain to my council member, but that's okay.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just to make it a little bit easier on you, Commissioner Roush, for ten years, I've told applicants that I see often, monthly or whatever, every month, that I won't meet with you until I have my agenda, and I do, thank the staff for ten years, I keep a hard copy, I can't do it on the computer because of my attention deficit, but now they will call me, and they will say to me, after years, I know you're not gonna meet with us after you get your agenda, so once you set a standard with, because I call you all the time, I guarantee you, they will respect you, and they will respect your timeframe, because you're setting the standard as to how you have to do it to be a good planning commissioner, and then they, they won't even call you until, they might call you, but they'll say, I will, I want to meet with you after you get your agenda, and once you let them know, pretty much that's the end of the story. That's all I say.
And sometimes people will call me prior to me getting an agenda, and I'll listen to them, and I'll let them ring the line, and then I'll tell them, I haven't read the agenda yet, because I just got it yesterday, and I have seventeen hundred pages, thank you for phoning me on your side of the story, I'll, I'll read the staff report, and then we'll, we'll comment at the public hearing, you know, and only if I have, you know, only if I have something that really doesn't make sense, one out of a hundred people, I'll call them back and say, okay, I have a question on this, but most of the time, it's a, for me, it's just been an easy way for me just to say, okay, I can't comment on this because, thank you for your comments, but I can't comment. And just to go further on, Peter, Mr. Lowenstein was stating, maybe one of the planning commissioners could talk about how we read through our agenda. I read through every word of the staff report, whenever I was brand-new planning commissioner, it would take me about two days, and I would read a, I mean, a little mistakes in there, because, of course, there's gonna be a little mistakes, I have seventeen hundred pages, and the funniest one was, you know, if a massage parlor is not approved at this site, then no cows will be allowed to be on this.
They lost it, or I thought they were required.
As Mr. Rankin said, is this Kobe beef or what? But as time goes on, I'll read the agenda item, then I go down to the staff's issues, and I'll read those issues, and then I'll read the project description. I don't even know, I've been to code enforcement issues, this happened in every building coming out of the past twenty years, unless it's an issue with that particular applicant, so I can kind of skip through that and just kind of scan through a lot of that documentation, then the staff has a table on there that says, do they have the right amount of parking, a wire N, yes or no, do they have this, do they have the handicap, do they have, how many parking spaces in? So, I used to read every one of those items, now I just scan it, and if it doesn't have Y, if it has an N, then I'll stop and I'll read that, because if they're in compliance, it doesn't really matter to me, because if they're in compliance, so that's how I try to get through my, my agenda a little bit quicker, and now I can go through about seventeen hundred pages, and I read, you know, every agenda item. item and every word. And I can do it in about five to six hours.
So it does make for productive being a parent. Some of it, they have to give you that chance to become familiar with their project, otherwise they're wasting their time.
So we, Peter Longstein for the record, we've structured our staff report. We, over the years, have shrunk it, condensed multiple applications and revised it. The current format has only been about a year and a half old since the last time we refined it. And I was trying to bring one up. It starts out with a project description. Usually we have some bullet points of the main issues. Then it goes into an analysis, so that's where we start getting into the technical amounts and bulk. And then we conclude with the findings. And that's where we make a finding that either you can support or, you know, come up with an alternate. And then after that, it's a lot of tables which staff needs for plans checking the projects after they may get approved for building permits and things like that. But there is a lot of relevant information in them. But then the meat of it is in those first two pages of the staff report. So you don't have to get lost in the weeds of how many trees or shrubs unless that's of interest at that point. If they're conforming with it, if they're deficient on it, then you can see to what degree. So I can just add on to what the chairman is saying.
Well, are those procedural issues?
Yes.
You know, the meeting sometimes are very hectic, so, you know, it's always important that maybe you should keep some kind of order. And the chair, of course, is going to be the one who really kind of puts the hamper to the galloped down in terms of keeping some of that order.
At least the mic button.
Yeah, or the mic button. Yeah, his, the chairman's control turns up all your mics. And I'm, mine's always live, so.
I just thought I did want to make a comment on that. If you were talking and your mic is consistently going off, turn your mic back on because I'm usually the one turning it up. Because too many people have their mic on and you can't, and I think, was it four mics?
Five.
Yeah. Five, including the...
Including the podium.
Clerk has and staff people.
And a lot of times when people will breathe them heavy into the mic or people are having a conversation, they're going to turn the mic up. I'll kill all the mics. And so if you ever hear your mic like shut up, just turn your mic right back on.
And Chairman, I know that you guys like that especially amongst yourselves. Sometimes I see the people's reactions when you guys are talking, but they don't seem like they're being heard. So I don't know, I don't know how we would address that, Chair, in terms of, you know, I know, I know you guys sometimes like to discuss an issue, which is important, it's to be actually on the page.
You just look at me and say, Vicky, stop it. Because I'm...
But I like it, but I still understand, but I can say to you before, you really, there's an issue you may need to discuss or question, you ask amongst yourselves, but just be...
That's why I like seeing...
But just recognize that the audience always feel, I see faces and they don't think they're, they're being heard. So maybe just be nice if we can, you know, limit that or wait till you're in between applicant or between protesters or people who are for the project and stuff, they just have, they could...
If they're just asking a general question such as a procedural question.
Right.
And if I lean over to Vice Chair and say, because I asked and figured it out.
Right. Yeah. They think, they think you're not, you're not hearing the other, you're talking about something else.
Yeah, or talking about that.
Yeah, talking about that, yeah. So I mean, always speak to the chair in terms of, I mean, I don't know where we got that through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, but this is the first time I've ever kind of had a group that, well, the council did as well.
Legislatively, it's...
Yeah, it's just, I mean, even though, I mean, you have to get the chair's acknowledgement of you. It's always hard as a chair having, you know, four of you talk to people at the same time. So the chair will be the person who likes to make the determination that, okay, you know, one at a time, if you push the button to ask the chair for permission to speak, the chair will acknowledge you and then you go forward. Is that what you like to do as a chair?
Correct. And if you're talking, you don't have to keep asking me over and over and over. Just, just sort of a little, we have an acknowledgement that, okay, we're going to give you time.
Yeah.
And then we know who is speaking at what particular time.
And sometimes even if your little light goes on, the chair will, will see your light go on, it'll recognize that you're going to speak. But it's always difficult for the clerks as well, which I should be saying, right, it's just the city attorney, so I'm identifying myself. But it's always hard for them to translate or put together a transcript if you're talking over or whatever. It's so funny, I was reading a transcript from like the nineteen ninety council, nineteen ninety council. They were talking all over each other and just trying to get a transcript transcribed by the clerk's office was nearly impossible because they couldn't identify who was talking to who. And they would do assets here, I got, I got part of motion here, then I got talking in between, then I got part of motion here, and then I'm like, okay, so I gotta make sure the court knows that this part, this part, and this part are motioned. And it's very difficult to do. So really kind of just recognize that the clerk is taking out every single word that you're, you're saying, or at least the reporter is. And if it's ever needed for court purposes, they have to transcribe that. And Louie, you know how difficult it is to transcribe when four people are talking over one another. So it's always important that you kind of just make sure that, you know, you get the chair's acknowledgement of you, of you, and you, and you speak to the chair. Calling people from the audience, you know, after the public hearing is, that, you also need to get the chair permission in order to do that as well. I know we'll get some, and we'll say, Mrs. Jones, can you come back here? You know, but really, it's really the chair's prerogative to determine whether, when and back the public hearing portion of the meeting is full or for that to be over. So if you get the chair permission, I'm sure you'd be happy to say yea or nay with regard to that. Of course, but you said, do you need to open public comments back up again or is it okay for someone to come up? You know, sometimes you open a comment and that may invite everybody to come back up. But if you have like a clarifying question, Chairman, in terms of, you know, where do you live again or, or, you know, or, you know, how does, how does this particular application affect, you know, your neighbor, you know, that kind of, they hit really kind of a clarifying question more so than reopening the public hearing because that means everyone's coming back up, you know, once you start reopening their public hearing. So I, that's really up to the chair to determine if he's going to reopen the public hearing or at least just get that clarifying question. So you don't technically, you don't have to go. I don't think you technically have to do it, but I think if it's a clarifying question, it's really kind of, I guess, building on what they previously said during the public hearing. And like I said, the chair will always have the prerogative to determine whether or not he or she would like to open it back. I said, do you clarify something to the other board? I said, I know that we do not during public comments...
Engage.
...engage with members of the public and the public comment and make their statement and then move on. Here, and I've seen other, some other boards that they do engage with the first instance of public comment. So I think a point of clarification might be, might be wise. Okay. I know during the first part of the public comments section and the last part at the beginning and end of each meeting, that's when you don't engage and the council tries not to engage. But if it's a person that comes to them homeless and I need help, then they'll engage the person. Or the person is saying something completely outlandish, they'll engage. And we try to, you know, you're human, you're going to, you know, if you need to finish up, you're going to follow through. With regard to, and again, I see some faces when I'm stuck there just observing, and people, they not think that you are, care about that people issue if you don't say something. And they'll go up and say, well, this is two feet from my house. And then you, then they, then you have to sit there looking at them. I mean, you gotta, is that what you're talking about in terms of... Well, sure, but I mean, if you, if you state what the policy is, you have two minutes to speak, the board will not, you know, be responding back to you, say what you find and it is what it is. That's true. And I think if you have some like questions... Yeah, you know, if you, if you get up there and sort of loosey-goosey and if you start responding to one back to another, then that's where I think that's... And I guess, and again, the chair has brought it to, and again, if we, if we're getting too much of that back and forth, what kind of thing where we lose control of the meeting? But there is a back and forth that might happen, which the chair can control. Yet what is the policy? Are you engaged? I don't think we have a rule, actually. On the board of regents, we deny. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think we have a rule yet before. I mean, sometimes you guys will engage and sometimes you won't. So I don't think there's a, there's no hard best rule in the bylaws that I've seen that tells you you can't engage. So we got, that may believe that's the chair's prerogative and he can, he or she, if you're the chair, will make a determination if in fact that that's appropriate at the time. But again, I think you want to seem like you're interested in what the people have to say. Sometimes you can't help but say, you know, where exactly is that? Or, you know, I mean, just something to kind of clarify before they sit down and have to come back up again after that. But of course, you're not going to sit there and argue with them back and forth, saying, no, you're, no, you don't, you know, like, I'm being subtle. Um...
It's good to see you.
Okay. And then, oh, just, okay, make, make sure that the findings you can do that you make are based upon the land use, critical land use application and not upon the person that's before you. Because these applicants or these land use decisions you're making are running with the land. So even though you love this guy, you're the person who's coming before you, make sure that you're concentrating really just on what the actual land use item is. Find rationale to support or deny that rationale of that particular item. And then, because you know, it's a, it's a... Just make sure you have correct rationale. That always helps me, I'm sure, when we're trying to defend the case. We talked about scrib or scribe already. Did you want, did you, did you want something with regard to that?
No, I just wanted to ensure...
And again, if you, if you have any issues with regard to disclosures, obsessions, 21A, and you feel like you can't split the page, you need to put the board reading the first 21A, point four two O and all of the other parts. And just to be able to hold it, so. But that, that touched on, I'll just close everything else. I was in a van, Mr. Chairman. I mean, a lot of times we hold our items in advance because you may want to see it again. For example, you ask an applicant to design, to redesign a site or something like that. A lot of times you'll hold it in advance or for that applicant to bring it back to you. There really isn't a policy with regard to doing that. I don't know how you feel, Chairman, with regard to letting items go forward or do, because that'll be the only time you see it. You make it on the applicant, redesign this driveway, but you will never see that. You, you just presume that they will do that going forward with the council. It'll be, it'll be in the record as a recommendation to the city council, the high inclusion recommendation to redesign that driveway, but you will never see it back again.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think one of the points behind this is, it was planning department's direction last year when we started hitting a hundred items and staying here until two o'clock in the morning. So trying not to hold stuff in advance, just to hold stuff in advance. And because every time we hold something in advance, not only do we have to read it and hear it again, but the city staff needs to do that and look at the report and update the report. And then we're speculative and then the developer, or homeowner, or whoever it is, just to wait another thirty days on positive capital of, you know, not having a project up and running. And yes, there's times that I think that we definitely need to hold stuff in advance. And I, I definitely has to have things built in advance for work. But if it's something like a general plan, no matter reason or vacation or things like that, you, I mean, historically, what we like to do is push that forward with our recommendations to city council. And then we depend on staff to say, planning commissioner, not this, or they approve this based on these reasons. Here was your recommendations and they requested that a meeting be held between this date and that date. And then they can, the city staff can state they either had a meeting, didn't have a meeting, revised plans, didn't revise plans. But if there's something that we feel strongly about and that we want to make sure that it's actually revised and that, that, you know, our wishes aren't just to go out the window, then hold it. I mean, there, there's a time to hold it and a time not to hold it.
Mr. Chair, could I guess you could also add conditions to that, an application? And that would kind of dictate that they had to go forward to council to either have that removed or they have to revise it in accordance with your...
Great call.
Thank you, sir. That was a, that was a...
Wow.
For a final now lawyer.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put it out there, Peter Longstein. The, doing it and designed by condition, I warn you that it's problematic, especially if something is not forwarding on to city council.
But I don't think the hundreds of conditions, but you know, you're the one too, I mean...
The other portion of, the secondary impact of events is that it then creates a larger city council meeting as well. Because all these items then start moving forward and then they go to the next city council meeting where they usually would have had ten, now they have twenty or forty.
Great. They're not going to have two meetings. So. Okay, Mr. Chair, might I hear you about, about the...
Chairman. Slottman, thank you, Christina Roush. So you, none of us want to be here till two AM. Granted. I mean, I, I would like to be out of here at midnight. And I think that we all should endeavor to do that tonight if we can by speeding up the meetings, limiting public comments on a timer, et cetera. But there are certain things that come up that are incumbent upon a neighborhood, my neighborhood, your neighborhood, where sometimes you need to put that item in advance because people feel like they weren't heard, they weren't properly noticed, or that this was a surprise to them. And you get a lot of phone calls, suddenly, we only have a week to try to rally. Would you, would you give me an example of an appropriate item and an inappropriate item to hold for advance so that I can have good guidance because I really do want to do my best?
Does it, does it get a case-by-case basis? I don't know if we... I'm surprised, Chair.
Take a stab at.
Queensridge.
Oh.
Could have been the holding advance because it was such a large item. So everybody couldn't figure everything out. We had an item where, eight months ago, where somebody came up and said, you know, I wasn't noticed and so therefore I want this thing held in advance. Staff was recommending approval. None of us thought that the project was that project. I want it held in advance, so I'm not rushing to call that. Are we going to hold it in advance? As one person said, they didn't get noticed, but they actually showed up to need them. So they, and they heard the whole public comment. Something like that, I mean, now we shouldn't hold something like that in advance. If it's something important, something that we need more information on, we don't feel comfortable about our decision, then definitely hold it in advance.
Okay, to the, to the notification issue, Peter Longstein. The Department of Planning actually exceeds the minimum requirements, that is by NRS statute, of seven hundred and fifty feet is the radius around a subject site. We actually notice a thousand feet. So if, and we endeavor to get the notifications right every time. If there is any instance where there is a notification, we will hold it in advance prior to the meeting if we're aware of it. And we will renotice it at the city council. But you will hear a lot of constituents just say, use that as an excuse for an advance. Doesn't mean it's true. There's nine out of ten times, or actually, majority of the time, that we, they have been noticed or potentially they rent and they're not on the, the assessor's role as the owner of record and it went somewhere else where it was supposed to be, or some kind of combination of that. But we take the assessor's role, wherever the mailing address for that property owner is where it goes. We put a sign on the site, so if you drive by the site, you're getting publicly noticed by the sign on the site. We physically post the agendas at a couple of different locations. Plus it's posted into the newspaper of mass circulation, so in this case, the RJ. So we're complying with the open, the open meeting law to let our, and actually exceeding the radius in which we notice. So the instances where somebody hasn't been noticed is very few and far between. It's just a very common excuse to throw out.
As I share with the chair, I was going to say, yes, it says, Peter, I think one
I think one time, there was an issue, it was actually the sign company, the building position, and they held everything, and we heard everything. That's the only time I can think of this.
But you know, Peter talked about the radius, the price of assistance, and, Peter talked about the radius. People, sometimes you're, you will get noticed, but your neighbor won't because they happen to fall within that, within that line. I mean, so, I mean, that's the unfortunate part, but we can't go, you know, 2,000 feet out to everyone, so that's unfortunate.
Yeah, Peter Longstein, we also notice a half mile around it for neighborhood associations. Those associations that participate with the city of Las Vegas, if they're anonymous and don't participate, we don't know that they exist. So we send it out to whoever's the president of the HAW, or the management company, or whatever it is, within, listed with the city of Las Vegas for those neighborhood associations in a half-mile radius from a subject site.
And then you hope that they tell their constituents, that's not your...
Right.
So my comment would be this, to take this one step further, what do you do with regard to council members? And there are council members who talk to their planning commissioners, there's council members who don't talk to their planning commissioners, there's council members who say, "I want this held in advance because I've been getting a large number of phone calls or concerns," even if it's outside of the area, but it affects the area. You know, I mean, it might not, it might be that, for example, Queens Ridge, or for example, Tournament Hills, very spread out, large golf course expanses in between, and not everyone's going to get noticed on a 750 feet, let alone a 1,000-foot margin, and their neighbor's going to get noticed, and they're going to find out about it, and there's going to be some concerns, and we don't want protests, and we don't want meetings till 2:00 AM. But we do want people to be heard, and we want people to feel like they have the opportunity to weigh in on their property values, their quality of life, and their ability for quiet enjoyment of their residence. So what do you recommend?
I mean, I recommend, and this, this body is an independent body. You're supposed, even though you're appointed by a council member, it's really kind of dependent on you to kind of be a little...
Absolutely.
...dependent in terms of that. And of course, you're not, you're never going to tell your boss, basically, you know, "I'm going to do what I'm going to do." But again, you, you, this body is supposed to be able to weed down those, all those issues and condense them down, then present to the council.
Well, you bring up an important point. Is the council member your boss, or are you appointed once you're appointed? Does the council member remove you?
You serve the pleasure of the, you, you get appointed by, you get appointed by the person, by the council person, but you're, but your appointment is confirmed by the entire council.
Right. And it runs concurrent with that council member?
Correct.
Is there an instance where the council member removes you, or are you independent?
I don't ever call, I've been here 21 years, I don't call it in sense where, where the council member is...
I'm just asking. I have a great relationship with my council member, I'm just saying...
I don't care, I don't remember this is where a council member has removed a public minister.
I'm curious.
And if some of them, and some of them don't, the city council members that don't talk to their planning commissioners, want them to have that independence, and want them to weed down the issues. It would be, our council meetings would be days long if you guys didn't condense all of this stuff down into a readable, you know, recommendation to them. So I think they want you to be independent, but again, they also want to tell you what their constituents feel as well, because they want to get real life with it, so. I mean, if they need to hold something, I don't see the problem with you going to hold, but you have to balance it out with your independence versus their desire. I think you know, just like they know, what the neighborhood wants and needs, so.
Mr. Scott, I think I have to wrap up. Just because, you know, I really appreciate Councilman Bob Cuffin, because over the past six and a half years, I think I've only talked to him about two items out of the 100 items. So he really respects, you know, my input, just my, my decisions and everything, and so I have received, you know, requests from different neighborhood association leaders saying, "Hey, we'd like to hold this in advance." And then I show up, and nobody shows up to the meeting, and everything, it sounds great. And those things, I'm not going to hold in advance. But don't take it too literally, that myself or any of the other commissioners feel that,